Time to begin, I believe. So, welcome this evening to the city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the row?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Foyce?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Jewen?
Here.
All right, thank you. If you would please join me in a moment of silence right now. All right, thank you. The pledge this evening will be led by Dave Zellinger, City Attorney.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented in the minutes of the January 28, 2019 meeting.
Second.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, now just want to let the council know, I may be checking my cellphone from time to time. Got a couple of things going on, so if I do, that is why. All right, it is oral presentations time. It is your opportunity to speak to the council. I know we have two people signed up to speak, but that won't be until item 10, and that's Jerry Thornsberry and Mike Going, so that'll be on item 10 on the agenda. But if you have a non-agenda-related item, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and share your thoughts.
Hi Mayor, hi Council. Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. After last week, after reading their financial report and seeing that we're given a vacant building, a refund of $20,000, and I've been down here for a couple of weeks asking for for a refund for a lady that lives at 213 Williston, and if you'd have read the packet that she handed everybody and talked to the plumber, it seems like that whole section of the street was changed two foot in that area, and sitting on top of her water lines had a stormwater sewer system along with cement, and he couldn't pull it. So, instead of $2,500, the bill was $7,300. And she agreed to go ahead and pay for the connections for her and her neighbor, which came out to $5,000. She paid the, she agreed to pay the extra $400 for cement, and all we're doing is asking that someone step up to the plate and refund her $1,900. Now, that could come out of the sewer fund, just like you rebated that vacant building out in Crossroads, 2532 Crossroad Boulevard, or take it out of the stormwater fee. I think somebody up there can make a decision. I think she went overboard on what she did pay. I wouldn't have paid a penny, but she was thinking of the plumber, that he had to be paid, you know? And I think is only right that, if you'd have read it, even the plumber said it looked like it was a problem that was related to the city, so. Because that thing was dropped way down two foot. When they got into it, her water line was only 36 inches below the surface. Well, down a block or so, they dug it up, and his was down about 50 or 60, what it should be. But we got the blueprints of that area, right in that area. That whole section right there has been changed, and I don't think she changed it. I think somebody from the Street Department of City or someone made that change, and it wasn't her fault. So, all we're just asking that she be refunded $1,900, not the $7,300, $1,900. She said that would be fair, so. I'm not getting any money out of it. All I'm doing is going to bat for a lady that's a widow lady, you know? And I think somebody up there can make a decision, either you Mayor or the financial chief or somebody. Take it out of the rainy day fund, who cares?
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
My name is Gary Steen. I live 51 Medina Road. I'm past commander of the American Legion Post 138, 728 Commercial Street. I'm here tonight to ask about a statue to be elected at Memorial Park or at a Veterans Crisis and Resource Center in Kevin Deal's honor. He is an active Iowa native who has given his life to serve others and his country, both as an active military veteran, a police officer, contract security abroad, and finally finishing up his career with the Department of Veterans Affairs in the United States. As Executive Director of the Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs, for the past three years, Kevin has worked 24/7. He helped all veterans, whether they are retired, disabled, homeless, going to schools, widows, or family members. He helped me personally. He bleeds the red, white, and blue. Kevin is our hero. I think when Kevin is ready, when his body is ready, he will become the veteran's angel in heaven. The Lord would take Kevin in his open arms, saying, "You are mine now. You will never have to suffer any more pain. You will never be forgotten." I wish all the courage that Kevin has to serve until the way, to the very end, in any way possible. Myself, I'll donate $100 to start this drive. I have contacted Waterloo American Legion, Cedar Falls Eagles Club, Cedar Falls Amvitz Writers and Sons. Nancy Showers is also willing to help and put this on Facebook. I believe the Mayor and City Council should vote on this request instead of putting it off until a later agenda. You can please send the donation to Post 138, 728 Commercial Street, a check for Kevin Deal statue. I'd like to ask the city to assist in grants and find any grants available to accomplish this mission. I thank you for your consideration. Like I said, Kevin Deal is a hero to all of us. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Steen. Is there, is somebody, did somebody put together some type of drive? Or you and Nancy, or is somebody doing something?
Nancy and I, we're gonna get together and we're gonna go over to, I believe it's the Veteran Bank, and have the checks sent over there.
Okay, okay. So, you'll get everything set up, and then if you, if you and Nancy get an email, just shoot me something, I'll, I'll give, I'll give myself as well, so.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you, sir.
Aaron Stacy Roberts, 411 Almond Street, Waterloo, Iowa. And I'm calling because I gave you and the city council members at the time on April 3rd and April 24th of 2017, a package, which I was trying to express my concerns about ongoing corruption, which has led my children to live and act under duress, or should I say, live under Stockholm Syndrome and act under duress. And the information I gave you was, under US Code, pretty much clearly a Rico charge that I was claiming, and I was just wondering, Mayor, had you contacted anyone with my concerns being it's been 22 months?
Well, part of the challenge was this was from the 80s, 90s?
No, this was from, excuse, no, 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 sir.
Yeah, come on back up.
This was from, in the 2013, and ongoing. Everything, if you would have read the information, it leads all the way up until 17, when I was getting threats of killing my grandchildren. So, that, that, no, it's not in the 80s. Nothing happened in the 80s with me. I graduated from high school in the 80s.
All right.
Yeah, this is all 2000, and it started in 99 or before, but it's still ongoing. That's what I'm trying to get to. And I just wanted to know, if it's over your head, because I'm accusing some of your city members of corruption, then maybe we need to contact, you should contact the federal government for the state, for the city, for me, for me. And number one, my children. I'm kind of like President Donald Trump. I know how to deal with them, but my children are acting under duress.
All right. All right, yes, sir.
David Dwyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. I am concerned about the financial statement, and I don't remember exactly, because I forgot to copy it, about this $20,000-plus that we're giving to someone as a refund. I want to say in that financial report or committee meeting, it was for sewer fund refund, sewer fee refund, and it bothers me that we are going to cover someone who is a personal, has a personal private property, personally owned, that we're gonna give them money back. I, again, I want to say that on that financial report, and I forgot to copy it, was that it was for a sewer refund. To get a sewer refund, you have to have a water bill. So, are we refunding the water bill also? Because your sewer fund is generated, your sewer fee is generated from a, an amount of money that you've spent on water. I can't see that a person did not see an empty building with a water fee, which would generate a sewer fee, and then not question that over, I'm understanding, a two- or three-year period, an empty building, and it has any water usage other than minimum at all? And then, as a city, we're gonna take our tax money, and we're gonna refund that to this person? I, I don't, I have no comprehension of this, as to why, and I think it needs to be further investigated, as to why we're gonna give anybody any money back on a private property that they did not comprehend there was something wrong, and go fix it. I can't see any city responsibility there. Please re-research this. I understand that it, it's not possibly, cannot possibly be reversed after this meeting, so I would, I would hope that someone would put something up on the, on the floor that would say, "Hey, we need to research this more before we go ahead and finally approve it." It just doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Michelle, you want to talk about, talk about or communicate about what the gentleman is?
Later, or? Do it now, or I can do it later?
Yeah, let's do it now.
Okay. Michelle Whedon, our Chief Financial Officer. We did, the Water Works did bring to us a very unusual situation that we did discuss last week at the Finance Committee. The city has had a longstanding practice for probably decades that if there is a water leak, that you can provide evidence, it went in your yard, for example. It did not go, you didn't put it down your toilet, so it didn't flush directly into our sanitary sewer, that the city will refund those sewer fees. It doesn't happen very often. More often, it's for residential probably than commercial property. We unfortunately were made aware by the Water Works of a commercial property that had been vacant for about three years. There, it's a real estate company that actually contacted us, and they had analyzed the invoices. I think that's why it came to us. They looked at it and realized their sewer bills were exorbitant, because they were. They, and there apparently was a leak there after the building was closed. It's, according to the Water Works staff, it was somewhere near, they have a meter pit. It's, I believe, I believe it's underground. I'm not an expert at that sort of thing, so forgive me if I'm mistaken. And there was a problem with the line, and water was leaking. The Water Works staff did verify to us it wouldn't have been going down the sanitary sewer. It would have been onto the ground. So, we did follow our longstanding practice. They are billed for the minimum, which is the same amount that they were being billed. When you look back when the building was occupied, they were minimum water use. They just were not a big water sewer user. So, we did reduce the large fees for the sewer, because they didn't, we didn't treat it. That's, the point is, we didn't treat that sewage. And so, we, under the longstanding practice that we've done for other customers, as we presented last week, Water Works felt they deserved this refund. So, that, that is what is before you, and Finance Committee did approve that refund last week.
All right, thank you.
Madam Minister, I'm one of the owners of a business at 2019 Crossroads Boulevard, and I didn't call ahead to speak.
You get three minutes then.
My comments are about item number 10. Can I do that then?
Yeah, you do, you'll wait till then.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
What was your last name?
Freester.
Okay, yes, sir.
Forrest Delavue, 1725 Huntington Road. I went to speak to one of the bills that was paid last week. It was, went through Finance, and then the council approved paying it. It was for the sewer repair that was done on Fletcher Avenue, emergency sewer repair, somewhere around the $20,000 range. We have a stormwater fee, which if it was a stormwater break, should have been paid out a stormwater fee. We also have sewer fees, and I thought it should have been paid out of sewer fees, but because this came through Finance and asked for your approval, I assume that it was paid, and I may be wrong, out of the general fund. That bill, I believe, should have been paid through one of the other funds and not the general fund. Could someone enlighten me as to where it was paid from? And if it wasn't one of the two sewer fees, why?
All right, that's your only question? Is that your only question, sir?
Yes, that is.
All right.
Michelle Whedon, your Chief Financial Officer. I believe that was paid out of the sewer fund. All bills are approved by council, not just general fund, so. And I believe the sewer department did supervise that repair, and it was paid using sewer fees.
Okay, thank you.
Right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. I was at a meeting a little earlier today before the council meeting started, and I heard some relatively good news, I guess, because we're gonna have a, or supposedly have a big chunk of money refunded from the TIF fund. I probably shouldn't say how much, but a pretty good chunk. So, maybe the city should consider, I'm not gonna say, you know, anymore, but I think it's time to consider paying back some of our debts, like the bonds and stuff. That would be one huge bond of money. That would reduce our taxes. It would keep all the smiling faces when they heard that number of how much they were gonna spend or get raises, miscellaneous other stuff possibly. But anyway, we could pay back. You actually could pay back some of that bond fund, down to the point where it would save us, because we still don't know how much percentage of the dollar that I give to the city of Waterloo, how much percentage is done to debt service. If we eliminate the debt service, I think we could probably be in pretty good shape tax-wise. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Michelle, off the cuff, one of the things that the Courier article did highlight, but it wasn't placed in the bright lights, was, did our debt shrink or go down? If you remember the exact number, I don't.
So, our geo-bonded indebtedness, I believe, did fall slightly last year, maybe about $3 million. And if you remember, that's repaid both with property taxes, also with sewer fees, TIF increment, when we use it for TIF projects, so it comes from a variety of sources. What I did refer to earlier was the release of valuation from the TIF. That's the property value amount. It isn't necessarily the taxes that go with that, but it certainly does generate some taxes.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council, going a second time?
Motion to close the hearing, receive comments, and place on file.
Second. A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Can you make a motion to receive the consent agenda, place it on file, and approve it with the addition in number 1A1, the bill payment in the amount of $2,238,136.29.
Second. All right, a motion's been made with the second. Counsel, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Within that, we have some appointments, and that is Councilman Foyce to the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, and is Rodney, is it Butts?
Boots.
Boots, can you stand up for us? Mr. Boots has been appointed to our Memorial Hall Commission, so we thank you very much for stepping up and standing out and being willing to serve. So, bless you, and we appreciate your sacrifice. Thank you. All right, could someone speak? Number two.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the request by Wade Fleming to rezone 4.79 acres from R3 Multiple Residence District and C2 Commercial District to C2 Commercial District located at 1685 Independence Avenue.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? You guys sound excited. The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda, going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, and ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 is amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance, by amending the official zoning map referred to in Section 10-4-4, approving rezoning 4.79 acres from R3 Multiple Residence District and C2 Commercial District to C2 Commercial District for construction of commercial buildings/b buildings.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Noel? Never jumped out of the chair that fast.
I'm getting slower, getting up here. Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I believe Mr. Fleming could not make it tonight due to a family emergency. He is requesting that the council suspend the rules if they can. He is looking to acquire this property and would like to keep the transaction going through as quickly as possible. We did not have any opposition at the Planning Commission meeting, and the applicant has submitted a site plan to buffer the westerly and northerly boundaries, which have bought the residential. So, essentially, this is rezoning the back half of the Myers Nursery to match the front half.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me, Noel. Noel? So, I mean, is he gonna be doing something this time of year when you're talking about this? Or there are other steps to go through, just so everybody understands?
I think it's, it's simply for him acquiring the property, he'd like to get that through.
Got you. All right, thank you.
And he is acquiring the whole parcel, the whole business.
That is correct.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication notice of public hearing on amendment to the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance number 5079 regulating the sale of fireworks.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. We have a couple of different speakers this evening. First up is Mrs., oops, this is item 10. All right, is there anyone that would like to comment on this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time? Mr. Morrissey?
Oh, sorry. Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
And receive and file the recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, and ordinance amending, ordinance number 5079 is amended, the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance regulating the sale of fireworks.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, could we have a little overview on this, please?
Who's, okay.
Eric Schrader, City Planner. So, as you may recall, previous
previously, there was an amendment to the Code of Ordinances limiting fireworks sales to industrial zoning districts, and then there was an amendment to strike that based on concern as to whether or not it would, uh, be uh, held to be legal from a constitutional standpoint. Um, since that time, there have been some court rulings on the case that have affirmed, um, local jurisdictions' ability to regulate the sale of fireworks through zoning, uh, regulations. Uh, so the city of Waterloo is proposing an amendment to, uh, the zoning ordinance as it pertains to the sale of fireworks. Currently, the sale of fireworks is not specifically listed anywhere in the zoning ordinance, but the C1 Commercial District allows for, um, the, um, retail sales and similar uses, so it is interpreted as falling with, within the C1 Commercial District and less restrictive districts. So this proposed amendment, uh, would prohibit the fireworks sales from the C1 Commercial District. It would allow them in a C2 Commercial District, but only when, from a principal building, uh, and when accessory or incidental to an existing, uh, retail sales use. Uh, so it would not allow it in temporary buildings in the C2 Commercial District. And then it would also allow fireworks sales in the M1, uh, Light Industrial District and Less Restrictive Districts, which would include the M2, M2P, uh, including from temporary structures, um, when there's at least a 200-foot setback from a residential district and for the temporary structures, at least a 25-foot setback from property lines. That's the proposed amendment, any questions?
So, so, uh, those folks that have been in business previously, are they exempted from this?
Uh, that, so this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance, and the zoning ordinance does have a legal non-conforming section, commonly referred to as a grandfathered, so any existing establishment, um, that, uh, is operating out of a permanent structure that does not comply with this ordinance would be grandfathered in.
And so what's the ultimate purpose of this? I mean, what's the benefit to the taxpayers?
The, the concern is regarding, um, the, um, both safety and aesthetics of fireworks sales, uh, ensuring that it's a compatible use to surrounding uses. So it's, uh, ensuring some setbacks, uh, some, an adequate amount of setbacks from residential properties, and then, uh, also, um, pushing the temporary structures into industrial zones where they're considered to be a little bit more compatible with the surrounding uses.
Weren't the tents primarily in like parking lots? Did I, did I miss something? Were they in residential areas? Oh, they were, I guess.
They were in, they were in commercial, they were primarily in commercial parking lots, but in commercial zones that were in close proximity, sometimes directly adjacent to residential.
Okay.
All right, Mrs. Jewen?
Uh, yes, um, Mr. Schrader, I understand, um, rumor, whatever, that the legislature is, um, thinking of taking away a city's ability to change the zoning ordinance in cases of fireworks. And let me first say, that really frightens me. Um, the legislature continues to try to erode home rule, and that bothers me because this could be expanded to other ordinance things as well. But, can you give me an update on where that is or what you're hearing on that?
Um, I can try, I don't actually have too much of an update, but yeah, at the time that this proposed amendment went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we were not aware of any proposed legislation, but since the Planning, uh, Commission's recommendation, we are aware that there is a proposed bill, uh, that would essentially preempt cities from regulating fireworks sta- sales in commercial or industrial zones. As I understand it, is just a proposed bill at this point, it is, has made it through one committee, but I'm not aware, um, that it's gone any further than that. I, I don't know, you know, what its path forward is, what its likelihood of being passed. There was discussion, um, internally based on that bill, if we, and I, uh, that bill came out after we took action to set the date of hearing on this as well. But the discussion was, it's just a proposed bill at this point, we have no idea, um, if it will even pass, so the, uh, determination was, from a staff standpoint, that we should move forward with this. If it ultimately is passed, uh, we would amend the zoning ordinance further.
Now, please keep us informed, um, because I do think that's something we should all speak out against, but keep us informed, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, and I think I sent over, if you go to the legislative update that I forwarded, there's an entire section on, uh, the fireworks portion. Yes, sir.
So, um, Mr. Schrader, so, just kinda reviewing this, this change, I guess. Really what we're doing is we're, we're telling business owners in commercial areas what they can sell or where they can sell it. Or, uh, or is this just an aesthetic thing, or is it more for safety reasons?
Eric Schrader, City Planner, I would say it, it, is, there are components of it that are both. There are safety components, that's looking at the setback from the residential zones, and the aesthetic component regarding the temporary structures and pushing those into, uh, industrial zones.
So we have many property owners in the Cedar Valley who own stores, and some of those stores sell gasoline, and they're sprinkled throughout our community as well, so where does this ordinance then lead us to for those guys?
The proposed ordinance would have no impact on gasoline sales.
Right, but where would this, we're going down this road now, we're dictating to these commercial customers what they can sell or where they can sell it. And, and I would think a gas station would be equally, um, as dangerous as some fireworks being sold. So it seems a little bit, we're picking and choosing what we're doing here. So if we're gonna go ahead and, and tell these business owners what they can't sell on the property that they own, then what comes next is my question.
Sure, I'll defer to Mr. Anderson, but the only thing I would say is, you know, the basic premise of zoning is dictating what you can sell where, uh, identifying, um, what is considered a less intensive commercial use and providing where that is allowed, which is generally, uh, in or adjacent to residential neighborhoods, to more intensive commercial uses, which are generally in areas that are gonna be a little farther away to industrial, uh, uses, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, did you have an explanation, or was that? And then we'll go to Mr. Morrissey if Mr. Jacobs is down.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, I could just add, I mean, in terms of being able to sell the fireworks at the gas stations, they still could inside their buildings, which we believe is giving another level of protection out there to the public in case something were to go bad. In, in, in comparison to selling gasoline and fireworks at the same location, I mean, the gasoline is in a lot of DNR regulations and containers and all that where the fireworks were in these tents, and so we're trying to kinda keep them in a, a level playing field, I guess, of safety out there, as we're looking at this in terms of how it's, how it's defined by the building code and the fire code and all that, in, in terms of the, the safety nets in place.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Jacobs? Mr. Morrissey?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, to me, this is common sense. This is both a public safety issue as well as an aesthetics issue, and I go along with what, um, uh, Eric Schrader has spoken to there in those two regards. Uh, and it's public safety, uh, not only for residential, uh, citizenry here, but it's also public safety for commercial businesses, in my belief, as far as commercial businesses being beside one another and being subjected to, uh, uh, something occurring that they do not want anything to do with. And that's why the setbacks and, and the other, uh, footage requirements are important in this as well. Uh, but the other, uh, thing about this that it does do is it tells the state legislature that you aren't going to take away our local control. And I'm tired of the state legislature telling the cities what the cities' people want in their own communities. And this gotta stop. We need to pass this, and if the state legislature wants to pass their bill, and they wanna say that they're gonna prohibit us from doing this, we need to get on board and file a lawsuit against the state legislature for violating the constitution of the state of Iowa that says that home rule is a constitutional right for local governments. And I'm tired of it being diminished and the city's not doing anything. This needs to be passed if for no other reason than telling the state legislature that we will govern our own cities, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, so, so.
And by the way, Mr. Mayor, I, just for anybody who wants to look at it, here's Senate Study Bill 1035, as introduced, it went through the Subcommittee on a partisan vote of, uh, two to one, and it includes provisions in here that you are not gonna believe. So if anybody wants to take a look at it, I'll start with Ray.
So let's, let's, okay, so the crux of the matter is safety and aesthetics, so, you know, right now, that's what this is about, if I'm correct, the premise of this. Okay. So, safety and aesthetics. Um, so, okay, any other, any other, um, statements? All right, so we have a motion to consider this for the first time, uh, with regards to the zoning changes. Uh, Madam, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second. Motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Foyce?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
All right, thank you. Uh, number four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that is an es- for asbestos survey services for properties located at 2127 East Forest Street, rectory only, 419 Lane Street, 800 West Second Street, just a minute here, I lost my spot.
We'll help you find it.
Yep. Um, 614 West Seventh Street, 536 Dawson Street, 623 West Second Street, 411 East Eighth Street, 328 West Fourteenth Street, 1211 Sycamore Street, 1420 Commercial Street, 1422 Commercial Street, 1426 Commercial Street, 1430 Commercial Street, 421 Logan Avenue, and 154 Harrison Street.
Second. All right, the motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Please state your name and address for the record and your thoughts.
David Dryer, 3145 West Fourth Street. Uh, are these 657A properties? And, uh, if they are, how many properties do we own now?
That's your only question, sir?
I'm sorry?
Is there your only questions?
Yes.
All right.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Um, all of the properties except for 1430 Commercial, which we acquired, are 657A properties. Um, at this time, we have over 160, uh, 657A properties, or properties that the city owns, um, for potential redevelopment.
All right, thank you. And I take it none of these are, um, anything can be redeveloped, but these are the worst of the worst?
These are all in very rough shape, um, of the properties on here. Um, we have a couple that, uh, budding property owners are interested in acquiring that you're, that, which are very, uh, very difficult to rebuild on due to their small shape. Um, we have others that a commercial building would like to go on, and then one of them will help for our levy, uh, reconstruction, uh, in the 63 corridor.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that have, uh, particular questions? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Second. That motion was made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. That motion has been made with the second, council questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just very quickly, um, 2127 East Fourth Street, are we, uh, rock solid in our ownership on that? Uh, we are not gonna be countersued or anything in regards to that property? As far as we know?
Dave Zella for City Attorney, now we do have title to that, no one has appealed, no one has indicated any appeal. Uh, I feel safe, but then again, human nature being what it is, uh, I'm pretty sure we've got it safe and sound.
And that's the one that has to do with the dike work, is that correct?
Technically, both of them do, we got the east half last year and we got the west half just now. This is the east half. This is the part that we have to, is that Verden Creek, or, yeah?
Yep.
Uh, the Army Corps of Engineers says if we don't get this puppy moving, there could be a ton more of houses in the floodplain, and their insurance is gonna go up and life is gonna be a mess, so this is something we really had to do, it's a very emergency type situation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, they can say there's no, there's no chance of appeal, it's been over a year.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. That motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to the Community Planning and Development Director for review.
Second.
It's a voice vote?
Yes.
It's a voice vote?
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, our estimate was $12,500. Our first bidder was AAA Budget Environmental Incorporated of Monticello, Iowa. Their bid was rejected because they did not provide a bid bond. Our second bidder was Hawkeye Environmental of Solon, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $8,100. Third bidder was TerraCon of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $13,875. Our fourth bidder was New Horizons LLC of Lincoln, Nebraska. Their bid was rejected because it arrived late.
Madam Mayor, pro temp?
Yes.
I'd like to take number five.
Would you take number five, please?
Yes. Number five is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the purchase of one 2019 one-ton truck with a dump body.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, uh, for the truck? All right, is there, uh, anyone that would like to speak, uh, with regards to the one-ton truck with the dump body? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing?
Second. That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. That motion has been made with the second, council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion received and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, madam, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk?
Our estimate was $67,000. Our first bidder was Bill Colwell Ford of Hudson, Iowa. Their bid amount was $62,786. Second bidder was Don's Truck Sales of Fairbank, Iowa. They per, um, sorry, I can't read tonight. Their bid amount was $62,349. Third bidder was McGrath Ford of Cedar Falls, Iowa. Their bid amount was $62,035.84. Fourth bidder was Rydell Chevrolet of Independence, Iowa. Their bid amount was $61,606.14. Fifth bidder was Divers Ford Lincoln of Waki, Iowa. Their bid amount was $62,955. Final bidder was Withem Auto Center of LaPorte City, Iowa. Their bid amount was $65,269.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution awarding the bid to Rydell Chevrolet of Independence, Iowa, in the amount of $61,606.14.
Second. All right, that motion has been made with the second. Um, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Someone take, uh, six and seven, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a match grant application to the Wellmark Foundation for a maximum amount of $30,000, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And seven is a resolution approving a professional service agreement with Helen Engineering and Surveying LTD for land surveying services along airline highway in an amount not to exceed $700, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Anyone with questions on these two items? Going a second time? Um, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number eight and nine, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to, number eight is a resolution approving an amendment to a development agreement with Blackhawk Contracting and Development, changing the timeline and adding the 657A infill policy incentive on property located within Hillside Edition, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And number nine is a resolution approving temporary easement agreements with Stephen M. Southworth and Dana M. Southworth in the amount of $185.10 at 4007-4009 University Avenue. Stephen M. Southworth in the amount of $370.27 at 4003-4005 University Avenue, and Stephen M. Southworth and Dana M. Southworth in the amount of $100 located east of 4003-4005 University Avenue, in conjunction with University Avenue Reconstruction Phase Two Project.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Um, any questions on these items?
David Dryer, 3145 West Fourth Street. This refers to, um, number eight. Uh, first off, where is Hillside Edition? Is that something within the 657A? And, uh, what is the difference between, uh, this number eight and last week's number eight with a, uh, amendment to development agreement with the Residential Development Partners and Blackhawk Contracting and Development Company is one of them mentioned? So, are the others off the page? And now, we're only dealing with Blackhawk Development? Um, like I say, where is 657A? Where is Hillside Edition? Uh, was that a 657? And what's the difference between last week and this week?
All right, thank you, um, Mr. Dryer. So, what I, what I'd like to do on this one, I'm going to have Noel address your, um, concern, but Mr. Roof, I want to put you on the spot, too. And, um, you know, we, we see things coming. We've had work sessions about, uh, what's taking place, but we do have a general amount of public that's watching. And I know you're not afraid of the public, but could you also elaborate once Noel finishes on your vision and what's, what's been able to be accomplished over the last decade or so with regards to building and building up our community? So, Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Uh, the Hillside Edition is the former Francis Grout School, um, which, uh, I think we platted into six lots there, uh, just directly west of Highland Elementary School. Uh, the city acquired the building back, uh, I want to say 10 years ago or eight years ago, uh, for about $25,000. We demolished it. Uh, Mr. Roof has built one building on there. There's five lots remaining on that portion. Uh, Mr. Roof had also bought the lots next to them and built about, uh, I think six or seven homes there. So, we're seeing some good infill housing in this area. The difference between this development agreement and last week's, and there was two of them on for last week, uh, dealing with residential development partners, which John Roof has taken over for the Baltimore Field and Williston Field areas. There was another one on there for some other sites, um, that'll, that'll pertain to future development sites, and then this one is specific to the Francis Grout School site.
Thank you. Mr. Roof, just, just, uh, two minutes or less. Um, why, why are you doing this? You know, why have you been doing this for the last 10 years or so? So, people that are looking can understand as well.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, John Roof from 1509 Commercial Street. That's a good question. Why am I doing this? It's been 12 years. Uh, in this particular site, we've built right out of a million dollars' worth of houses on the east side in that particular area. We've built $8 million total on the east side. And I'm doing it because when I sat in your seat, Mayor, I realized that there wasn't a lot of affordable housing being addressed in this city. We can go all around our city and see 200, 300, $400,000 homes, but that isn't the makeup of a, a lot of our citizens. So, I started doing this, and, uh, the only way you get it done, uh, to build a home that you can sell, and we started out at 110,000, 122,000, uh, in this area now would command about 150. But, uh, the only way you do it is with incentive programs. We get investment tax credits from the state. We get the 657A amount. And what it does is allow us to get the price low enough so we can qualify people and that they can move into them. We've never had anybody back out. We've never had, I've driven around the city, and we see that they're keeping them up. Uh, it isn't just something, uh, to the questioners' thoughts, uh, why just Blackhawk? Well, because Blackhawk is the only one doing this kind of work. I'd love to have more people involved because I think they can be. And, uh, it's as simple as that. We, we work, uh, on a low margin, and we try to build homes that people can afford, and we try to build up parts of the city that haven't been built up in a long time.
So, this is about community building, putting people in homes, giving them an opportunity to be homeowners for the city. So, uh, you know, we, we thank you. It's been a, a long journey, and we know, we've seen neighborhoods that haven't had housing, uh, new housing in over 80 years start to see some forms of life and revitalization. So, uh, we thank you for those efforts, and, uh, we appreciate it.
Always a pleasure to talk to you. Thank you.
All right. Uh, counsel questions?
Mr. Mayor, just real quickly, item number nine, is that the, uh, last of the easements for University Avenue? Okay, great.
Where's Eric? Eric, you want to stand up too, buddy? You don't have to talk, though.
We're done.
Yay.
But, uh, we, we, we thank you guys for your efforts. We thank the council, too, for pushing and prodding, and it was good to see this done. So, thank you, uh, Councilman. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes. All right, thank you. Number 10, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
Number 10 is a motion received, filed, considered, passed for the first time, and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by amending Section 13 fireworks of Chapter 2, General Offenses of Title V Police Regulations.
Second.
All right, that motion's been made with the second. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like, oh, yes, yes, there are people in the audience. Jerry's like, yeah, you better. All right. This is Thornsberry, if you want to, um, take the podium.
Thank you. Jerry Thornsberry, 704 Sheridan Road. I ask this council to continue the ban of consumer fireworks.
Hold on one second. So, we had to have a motion in second to begin discussion. That was completed. We don't vote until after.
Right.
All right.
Start me over.
I paused the, I paused the time, don't worry.
Um, oh, where was I? I find, I ask the council to continue the ban of consumer fireworks within the city of Waterloo. I find it incredible that this council is willing to reconsider the current ordinance because it's unenforceable. Really? So, because some people in Waterloo do not respect the law, this council considers a change to the ordinance. Great. What message are we sending to those of us citizens who are law-abiding? Let's see. Too many people spraying graffiti messages on city-owned property? Too tough to catch? No worries. Just rename it Modern Art. Too many people speeding? No worries. Too tough to enforce? Just let them go. Hard to imagine that because an ordinance cannot be enforced, this council considers changing the rules. No worries. While I do worry, as the reasons for passing the ordinance banning essentially a missile loaded with a variation of gunpowder have not changed. There are veterans and others who still suffer from PTSD. There are disabled citizens who, like my nephew, whose hearing is so acute that he must wear noise-canceling headphones day and night and take a mild anti-anxiety drug to survive the noise. Disabled citizens will still suffer. My friend will relive the loss of a family member each time she hears the next M-150 explode. She will still suffer. Citizens, young and old, with severe health problems are, and that become extremely agitated with the noise of exploding fireworks, will still suffer. Parents will struggle getting their children to sleep while a neighbor shoots off fireworks. Children will suffer. There will be pets who must be sedated, oftentimes at their peril of their health, so our pets will suffer. Today, most of us live in established neighborhoods with our houses built about 20 feet apart. What about property damage to a neighbor's roof or landscaping? I am dumbfounded that this council may consider the potential comp, this potential compromise, which gives permission for one neighbor to potentially harm another's property. Is it okay to disrupt the peace and tranquility of other citizens using the rationale that those who bought these fireworks should be allowed to fire them, and then if it rains, allowing this misery to continue on other days? Do dollars spent by individuals matter more than the distress incurred by all other citizens because of their personal decision to buy a product? This is not commerce. This is coercion. I agree with changing the zoning of where fireworks may be sold. I agree with applying for a grant for additional funds for enforcement. I agree with increasing the fines for those people who do not obey the law. I do not agree with the amending of the current ordinance. Remember, first, the first stated purpose of the city's zoning ordinance shall be to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of citizens. Legalizing the disruption of peace and tranquility of law-abiding citizens of Waterloo, dumbfounds me. Regardless, if this council moves forward with this amendment to the existing ordinance while ignoring your sworn duty to promote the general welfare of others, I remind you that our nation celebrates its Independence Day on one day, July 4th. There is no need to subject citizens to this intrusion on their well-being the day before Independence Day or the day after. No rain date, as some suggest. Do not extend this misery for the majority of citizens who are against this personal-use fireworks. Let's strengthen our community by enjoying the, the organized fireworks. Let's do this together. Once again, I plead with you not to lift the ban of personal-use fireworks here in Waterloo. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Goings, uh, I had you second on the list, but you want to...
I insist that he goes first. He signed up, he registered, he can go ahead.
All right. The acts of courteousness and support.
Civility, yes.
The closer.
Okay.
All right, we're ready.
Mr. Mayor, Mike Goings, 1203 West Second Street. As most of you know, I stand before you as a person with PTSD that's negatively affected by fireworks, and I will clarify that not everybody that has PTSD is negatively affected by fireworks. It's like any illness. There's a bunch of variables. Um, and you also have to consider that there's whole other groups of people that are, have sensory issues. As we've heard, children with autism are, are on that sensory issue. And today, you'll hear what I've discussed, some of what I've discussed before, but you'll also hear one suggestion that may surprise you. Um, first, I would like to see if the mayor and council can get assurances that dispatcher Chuck and any other dispatchers that have entered Waterloo fire, that haven't entered Waterloo firework calls in the past, will be required to enter all Waterloo citizens' calls for help and dispatch officers to all firework calls that come into the dispatch center, and not just the ones that they decide to enter. I do have paper proof and audio on that I can prove that. Um, the fine, here's the one that might surprise you. I think, uh, knowing police officers, that raising the fine is going the wrong way. I think it needs to be lowered into the $150 range. Uh, as, the reason being is that officers are compassionate. They don't want to take meals off of tables by fines, by writing tickets for, that have fines that they think are unreasonably high. Um, and especially if it's something that they enjoy doing, and I'm being alerted on as I'm speaking. Um, previously and again today, I'm here to ask that the date be July 4th only, with very limited hours, and that there be a ban on all aerial fireworks for, for, as Mrs. Thornsberry said. Um, there's also second-class consumer fireworks, as you'll see in the pamphlet. Um, first-class consumer fireworks are the ones that are highlighted, yellow. Um, second-class, there's no highlight, and then there's novelties that are listed. Um, there, if, if, um, I would also ask that you, uh, uh, limit the, uh, the time down to 4:30. I've asked a question before, and, you know, they don't need to light aerial fireworks or any kind of fireworks off before 4:30. Uh, and that will also give the third-shift workers a chance to, uh, get a full, full eight hours' sleep, um, before, if, if, if you allow the aerial fireworks. Des Moines, their start time is 4:30. There are several other points I'd like for you to consider. Um, not everyone that has a family member affected by fireworks can afford to leave town for three or four days. Um, this is also why I disagree with rain dates on either side of July 4th. The, uh, as I mentioned, for some families, if at all, it may be a one-day trip, and they're done for the year. And previously planned trips with, uh, tickets purchased, such as zoos or concerts, they don't come with a rain date, uh, if there's rain in Waterloo. Uh, the display fireworks shows, there are many other opportunities to view the larger display aerial fireworks shows in Waterloo. Uh, those shows should be enough for people to get their display fireworks, uh, fixed. Uh, beyond that, they just like to blow stuff up. Uh, you have, last year, Waterloo Bucks had nine aerial fireworks shows, including one on July, planned on one, on July 4th. In Waterloo, there was VGM fireworks, My Waterloo Days. Uh, Sunnyside Country Club has had fireworks the last couple, Fourth of Julys. Then, there's also the mayor's fireworks, which eventually you'll get to after the rain date, so, um...
With, uh, display fireworks shows, it's easier on those of us with, uh, that are negatively
affected, because those are advertised in advance. Um, I do a calendar for anybody that is, whether they like them or don't, or they're negatively affected, they can check this calendar and make arrangements, uh, accordingly, whether it be to just shut a window, turn a stereo on, or, um, I'm close enough downtown that, well, we go to Cedar Falls for a while. Uh, one family I talked to, they, uh, their child has autism and has sensory issues. They go out far enough that he can see the fireworks but doesn't hear the sound. So, that's, that's part of the reason why aerial fireworks, I think, are the, are the major problem. I would venture to guess that with, uh, the police calls, um, they're probably mostly generated by the aerial fireworks, because that's the majority of people that can hear it, and the ones that don't, you know, understand the difference between fireworks and, um, uh, and gunshots. Um, the argument I've heard over most of the years is all about, it's all about the Fourth and the freedoms of the Fourth of July. Nobody's ever mentioned July 3rd or 5th. So, um, I agree with, I mean, that's going to be a compromise, is the Fourth. Um, I also ask that you do not suspend the rules today. Uh, it's been in the Courier, but not everybody gets the Courier. Uh, the ones, the people that are watching at home, this is their first opportunity to, uh, see that it's coming before you. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them, too.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Reaster?
Matt Reaster, I own the business at 2019 Crossroads Boulevard, and I'm here to speak in favor of the ordinance change. Uh, I respect Ms. Thornsberry and Mr. Goings' opinions. Uh, I think that actually, if, if you believe that the concerns of anti-fireworks people are all legitimate, and if you believe that they're the only things that matter, you still could come to the conclusion that allowing legal fireworks for... still could come to the conclusion that allowing legal fireworks for three days is the right way to go. And the reason is because it confines the disruption in the minds of some people. It's not a disruption to everybody. In fact, you go to our Facebook page and see that there's one person who says he does fireworks to relieve stress. So we didn't get him here, but he might have tugged at your heartstrings with that story. Anyway, in order to confine the disruption into three days, there are many law-abiding citizens who want to do this legally, and whose neighbors get together and, and enjoy it, put on a show, and have a good time together. And for those people, they're not the concern. They're not the ones who are doing stuff when it's illegal, they're not the ones who are doing things at 2:00 in the morning, or, or shooting stuff at their neighbor's house. I think when you give citizens who want to do it legally, a time to do it legally, they'll abide by that. And then you are free to deal with the problem cases. I think that an increased fine is fine. I think that freeing up law enforcement to, to go after people who are truly a nuisance, I think that's great. And I would just say that, that those of us who are in favor of fireworks usage legally are in no way insensitive or uncompassionate toward people who have problems, but here's the fact. There are a lot of people who have a lot of problems with things that are legal to do. There are people who have allergies, and we can't police every problem that, that, or ban everything that causes an allergy. There are all kinds of other noises that are nuisances besides just fireworks. I frankly am not a dog guy. I can't stand barking dogs. So what am I supposed to do about that? I had another guy that came into our store who's advocating for legalizing fireworks. He said, "Listen, if my neighbors would quit riding their Harleys by at 3:00 in the morning, piped out, then I'd listen to their request for me not to shoot off my fireworks." My point is that there are a lot of things that cause people disruption, and that people don't like, and just because a few folks are affected one way or another doesn't mean we can completely ban it. There are 38 days in the summer that are legal to sell fireworks. Three days to use them is a more than reasonable compromise, more than reasonable. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council with your thoughts? Yes, ma'am.
Norah Jean Suker, 2853 Cedar Terrace Drive. I'm definitely against fireworks. I think they need to be banned. I believe that there's a lot of people that have the medical issues, there's a lot of pets that go crazy, and if you are going to do something, do it just July 4th, but I would really like to see a ban. There's enough places you can go to see fireworks. Many times, I go out of town to see fireworks, and there's enough aerial displays around that I think you could get your fix. I don't think you need to be doing them, because I know last year fireworks were every day, they weren't just a few days. And I know my dog went nuts. I just didn't know what to do with her. I had, she had to get medicine from the vet to calm her down. And I really don't like the loud noise either, so I would like you to just ban them, or if not, just have one day, the actual day of our freedoms. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Going a second time. All right, council.
Couple questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, first, I have two questions. First is to Chief Tralka. I think you said, if I heard you right, in the past, you said that it was harder to enforce the ban than it was if we had one or three days. And I kind of lost the train of thought there. If you could explain that to me.
Deanne Tralka, Chief of Police. Yes, from our perspective, it's, it's probably good for the community to allow a window for them to utilize fireworks, yet also assist in the officers for enforcing it, to take a more rigid approach on enforcement when they aren't allowed. So outside that window.
Okay. I think, I don't follow. Why is it easier to enforce when you've got, are you just assuming that not as many people would break the law?
Yes, yes, that, and cops are human. They generally, probably the majority of the officers feel they should be allowed, so there are some personal philosophical differences that should not come into play, but they are human.
Steve, let me ask you a question. If there's a, a call, does an officer have to show up if there's a loud call, or explosion, or something that sounds like a gunshot? Like, do they still have to show up to that area if there's a call?
Generally, yes, but circumstances can dictate. Just dispatch will triage, try to triage these calls, like if we receive multiple calls to what appears to be the same incident, or if there's an officer in the area and he says, let's say somebody calls in gunfire, and an officer's in the area, and he says, "It's not gunfire, it was fireworks," then he would probably not go directly to that area.
Okay. All right, thank you. Your second question.
Second question is, are there other cities? There were quite a few cities last year that banned it. Are there other cities that have changed course on this? Mr. Goings mentioned Des Moines. I thought Des Moines had banned it before. Have they changed their mind now?
They haven't. I think we're about the only large city that's changing, or feeling to a change. Have you heard anything different? All right, that's your two. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm against this, totally against this. My ward does not like it. Overwhelmingly, my emails, phone calls, and personal contacts have been against this. Last year, when I was asked to vote on this, I sat here and I, it came down to this. I saw two people's faces in my mind, and one is in my ward, and he suffers from the effects of Agent Orange and PTSD. He lives right next door to someone in politics at the State House. And at the time, we had quite a large window for availability on firing these off. And I was told the story of how the neighbor would come out in the morning and robe and slippers and light off nine or 10 off his deck, every day, and at odd times during the day. And after he was approached by his neighbor, he said, "It's legal, get used to it." I, I for one am offended by that. So when it came time to cast the vote, even though I'm very much pro-business, I had to think about that and to think, that's what it's going to be like. It's going to be people doing whatever they want, whenever they want it. In my neighborhood, I noticed that kids went up and down the streets after dark. They weren't firing them off from their own property, they were out in the street. And like everyone else that has a dog, my little dog went nuts. Now, do I think we should have laws based on our dogs? No. But I also think that it shouldn't be, and I mean no offense to our police department at all, I am related to cops. I don't believe that the police should make the call as to whether this is a good law for us to pass or not. Get elected, run for office, get a chair up here, then you get to decide for your citizens. I, we were told last time that the fine, which was $250, there wasn't any fines. Now, whether that's true or not, I don't know, because it was not Chief Tralka that told us that, it was his representative. So $250 fines, we all think, okay, we're fining people $250 for illegal fireworks, which everything was illegal last year. We should have a lot of money in the bank. We don't. So to increase it to 375 reminds me of that Billy Preston song from the mid-'70s, "Nothing from nothing ain't nothing." That is a silly thing, I believe, to raise a fine that we are not collecting at all. We have no intentions of it, and I suspect we will have no intentions in the future. My people don't want it for a variety of reasons. They think it risks their property. They know. I had an autistic fam, a family with an autistic son call me. It's, it is physical torture for that child. And you are at the mercy of people who don't think it's a big deal at all. I just, we deserve a safe, sound, and pleasurable environment for everybody.
All right, thank you. Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Mayor, I take a differing view on this. I, the fact of the matter is that the state legislature, two years ago, passed an unfunded mandate onto the city, all the cities, all the counties in the state of Iowa. And that mandate was that you don't have anything to do, you can't stop vendors from coming into your city, your local government, and selling fireworks for the days, not only in June, July, but also in December, and even early January. So what they did was then they left it to the municipalities to decide if you were going to allow use, but they left their own footprint as far as what they would suggest for municipalities, local governments, to do as far as use. Well, that first year, we decided that we would allow five-days use, see how it went. Well, we all know, that didn't go very well. So then we changed that, and we banned it, and we all saw what happened there. No change. People are going to buy fireworks when they're legal. I mean, let's face it, unless the law is changed, fireworks are legal in the state of Iowa. Now, it's up to us if we want to decide if we're going to make everybody who wants to use the fireworks that they bought legally to break the city law by shooting them off in the city, which is on their private property. I voted against, I, I voted for banning, but after two years of seeing that the five-days didn't work and the ban didn't work, then what I say is a compromise. And what this is, Mr. Mayor, this is a compromise. The other, I, I mean, this is a multifaceted, I see, approach to change in this ordinance. The second thing was the zoning thing, and if you remember, last year, I fought against not, I fought against the fact that we were going to allow the sales of fireworks anywhere except for residential. Okay? And there was a judge's decision that had to come down, and that judge's decision did come down that upheld cities' rights to zone where they want certain businesses to go. Okay, so we got that in writing now. So that's what this is doing, because it went through the proper procedures this time of going through planning and zoning, and having planning and zoning unanimously approve this change in the ordinance about where they can be sold based on public safety concerns and based on aesthetic concerns, which is what they did. So that's another part of it. Then the other part has to do with the penalty phase. If you violate it, well, I think it was one of the speakers said that it lowers the amount of time when you're going to be getting calls from 38 down to 35 days. That's an improvement, at least as far as the police are concerned, and as far as enforcement issues are concerned. This does not in any way change the banning of fireworks in December and early January. It keeps that ban in place for those days. What it allows is allows those few days, and then it raises the fine to act as a deterrent for people. So it allows people who buy fireworks legally to have a legal window to set those off and remain in their city. But if you violate that, it increases it at the same time. And then lastly, G in this talks about enforcement and compensation. And I think that everybody on the city council got the email from Chief Tralor, and he may want to speak to that himself, and maybe even Chief Tralka. But the, the language in there talks about the police enforcing this, and also in the discussion that we had in the work session, it could include the use of police reserves. Well, I think that's a very good idea, but I also, and I talked to Chief Tralor about this, one of the things that in the interpretation by the state Fire Marshal's office is that it used for education, and it could be used for several different things, including enforcement equipment. So enforcement equipment in this regard can pertain to vehicles used, rented, or whatever by police reserves. So I speak in favor of passing this for the sake of public safety, for the sake of allowing a certain period of time, very limited as it is, for people who are legally buying fireworks to legally discharge them in the city. I would also suggest that one of the things we can do is eliminate that, that language that is in there about applying for a grant, because I don't know if that is going to be possible at this point in time. Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to be able to speak again, if at all possible, following everybody else on the council's speaking. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I am, I, I'll just come right out with it. I am in favor of some legal fireworks at some point in time, and having said that, that doesn't mean that I don't sympathize, empathize with the individuals that have a negative impact from fireworks, but my constituents, yes, there are those that don't want fireworks, and there are those that do want fireworks. And for me, I represent all of those individuals, not just those who don't want them. And what, I guess what I'm trying to say is, is this, at the very least, for me, listening to the people that have talked, for me, I'm just going to say this, is I, I'm willing to request or introduce an amendment for July 4th only, if that's feasible for everyone. I mean, for me, that, that is something that I think, at least the Fourth of July, give, give the citizens who want to shoot them off the opportunity and the ability to do it in a legal fashion.
Second.
I'd be in favor of that, too.
Okay, you, you made an amendment, and then Councilman Morrissey has some language in here that needs to be corrected, right? Mr. Tralor, could you talk about that portion?
Just a second. So I want to clarify something. So your amendment is to make it only on July 4th?
July 4th, same times that are listed.
That are already in here?
That are already listed.
Okay. What? I had him first, him second.
Well, I was wondering, because, okay. Pat Tralor, Fire Chief. Earlier this afternoon, or this morning, I had Michelle Westfall send an email out to all of council, and I think she might have followed up with a phone call. Had a very good discussion with the state Fire Marshal, who got back to me this morning on a few questions I had regarding grant opportunities through the state for fireworks types of related grants. And he informed me of the statute, how it reads, and I did forward that to you in, in the email. And the item G in the proposed amendment just gave me a little bit of grief, just in the fact, I wanted to make sure that everybody's clear, that the, the grant, if awarded, cannot be used for any type of salaries or reimbursement for overtime. The state has one fund set up to operate fireworks out of. In that fund, there's $355,000 currently. Out of that fund, all of the inspection costs related to fireworks operations comes out of that, and so it is the grant fund. In the, in the history of the grants, there's been four, approximately four, that have been issued. One was for $35,000. That was to the State Juvenile Fire Center Organization for Educational Materials. And then three other ones were very small. One was for about $180, and the other ones were somewhere around $1,000. So I just didn't want you under the impression that there's a big cash cow there for us to write a grant to get reimbursed for overtime reimbursements. We do intend to put in for the grant this year. The application opens on May 1st, and we do have some pretty good direction from the state Fire Marshal. Is it appropriate to have... Is it appropriate to have in a, in a ordinance to pass someone with putting in a grant every year? I'm not sure if that's appropriate or not. I just wanted to make sure that you, you're aware as a council that there's not a, a big pool of money there, especially for overtime, uh, or any types of benefits. Mr. Morrissey is correct in the fact that it can be used for, uh, equipment, uh, related to the enforcement, uh, but certainly no salaries or overtime.
So, I mean, to require staff to write a grant every year, doesn't even, it's not even conducive. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd just like to make, uh, a, a second amendment to this, and it doesn't have anything to do with the usage, it has to do with G, and that is...
Hold on, we've got a motion and a second on the table now.
Right.
So, are you wanting to rope your amendment in with what Pat's wanting to do?
That's fine.
Okay.
And, and I, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I just want to, uh, you know, the process has been that if the amendment, uh, say it would pass, um, then we vote immediately on the entire entirety of it. And I just want to make sure that if I have another amendment on this same overall, um, item, that that amendment gets introduced as well, Madam Clerk.
So what I would say about ordinances is that if you have any kind of amendments that you want to make to the language now, that we get the amendments out of the way first, and then when we go to do the first reading, all of those amendments that you guys make at this point in time will be in your first reading of the ordinance. But I want to caution you to be very specific, because we have to be specific because we're writing a law right now.
Great. So what you're saying is that I should wait until after this first, uh, motion by council person Amos is voted on to make my amendment? Correct?
Sure. What I have right now is that, is Mr. Amos's amendment, which is to amend by restricting the usage to July 4th of each year between the hours of noon and 11:00 PM.
And then following that vote, I could make my motion for an amendment?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Does that eliminate the rain dates?
Yeah. Yep, so it would just be on July 4th?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So I would just, I guess, like to, um, say a couple of things. Number one, I, and I know everybody up there, is very empathetic for Mrs. Thornsberry and Mr. Goings, and most of us are animal owners and, uh, certainly empathetic for that. As I've said from the beginning on this whole discussion several years, I really wish people would spend their energy talking to their legislators, because they're, they're the ones that started this. It wasn't us. And, and every year we go through this, and they're going through the same thing in Sierra Falls, Neveensdale, and everywhere else, and it's too bad. But, uh, I think the reason that, that we came up with this three-day, three-day deal was because of the recommendation of the Fire Chief and the Police Chief, as, as Councilman Morrissey mentioned, some kind of a compromise. When we did it for five days, kind of thought the, uh, bed was a little too hard, and when we did it for a complete ban, the bed was a little too soft. So I think that that's why we came up with this, but also keep in mind, we've had many discussions about then, what do you do about rain days? And I think that's also part of the three-day deal. And we all understand there's no guarantees, and we saw that this last year. I mean, there was a complete ban, and I think there was as much or more firecrackers than there were the year before. So obviously, renewing the ban, I don't see how that is a logical answer to the problem. And so I think the theory that the chief was explaining is that the majority of the people that are, uh, follow the law, will see the laws for three days, they will buy their legally purchased fireworks and set those off during those three days. There's certainly going to be some people that won't, but the vast majority of the people will, and so for three days, we'll just have to, um, get through it. But hopefully that will make the other 32 days or 35 days, or whatever the time period is, much more reasonable. And so I, I really think the three-day deal is where we need to be at, so.
I'm going to give out, uh, council cards to all citizens during this time, too. Um, so, yes, ma'am?
I have a follow-up. Um, you know, I hear this, oh, this state, the state made us do it. Well, if we don't like what the state did, why are we getting on the bandwagon and playing along? I don't understand that. If we don't like what they did, let us thumb our nose at them and say, we will not play. We will have an environment in our city that we like. We will seek to foster it. And as far as, um, policing it, it's never going to work unless the police want to write a ticket. It's just not. And it was easy last year because every bang you heard was illegal, every one you heard.
And they didn't.
Now, this year, we're going to have ours. Oh, did it come within this parameter? Did it go within this day? Oh, we're all confused. It's just much simpler to say no. To say no to the State House first, and then to say no here. We want our city the way we want our city.
All right. Anyone else before we go back to Mr. Morrissey? You, you want to give us about a...
Well, I was going to wait until after the vote on this, Mr. Mayor, according to what, uh, Madam Clerk said.
All right, so, um, Mr. Amos had come up with an amendment, uh, a compromise to come up and just do one day, uh, July 4th. Uh, that is on the dockets right now. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify...
You just said you...
No, it's just a, a clarification of what we're voting on, is between the hours of noon...
I can read it again.
Okay.
The amendment that's proposed is to restrict usage to July 4th of each year between the hours of noon and 11:00 PM. Ready?
Just waiting.
Okay, okay. Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
All right.
Okay, give me just one second. Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, that, Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
So that puts us back to the original language, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, what I'd like to do with item G is make a motion to eliminate that last sentence, uh, but make sure that in that first sentence, that we have an understanding enforced by police officers includes the use of, of police reserve officers. So my motion to amend is to strike the last full sentence in G and then just add a clarifier that police officers does include police reserve officers.
What does the clarifier look like to you? Would that say, police officer?
Just as table talk is fine. Just to hear what, uh, Chief of Police says about that, that it would include...
I believe at the work session, Major Leibold stated that if it just says, "police officers", that would include both police reserve and police officers.
As long as that's the understanding that we have. Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Can I ask you a question? Uh, Chief, is it legal for, uh, reserve officers to issue tickets? I did not think it was.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Could I take care of that?
Yeah.
Can I say your attorney intervene here for one second? Uh, there's, there's a couple of things I think council needs to be aware of. First of all, uh, this is a very difficult thing for police officers to enforce. Remember, this is a simple misdemeanor, which makes it a crime. It's not a municipal infraction or something like that, so Chief Trowka's officers would have to see these people do it, be able to, have to identify the actual person who's doing it, and then as the prosecutor, me, I have to prove it beyond a reasonable doubt. So if there's a group of 10 kids and there's explosions going on and they all go, "He did it," uh, how, unless they see it, they can't prove it beyond the reasonable doubt necessary. So, uh, he's got great officers, they're out there, they're trying to do their job, but they're also smart enough to know that they can't prove this. And it's, we lose $85 in court costs every time we take something to trial and lose on a simple misdemeanor. Plus, the officer's time off the street, where he or she could be, if their third shift, obviously, at night, uh, sleeping and not getting time and a half for coming in and testifying on a case that we really can't prove. Uh, secondly, section F of Mr. Morrissey's, uh, amendment, it talks about the minimum fine of 325, 375? Okay. Remember, this is a simple misdemeanor and under state code where that would, that would give us a large leeway, and it's between $65 is the minimum, and I think it's 625 is the maximum. We can set a minimum fine, we can say, like the state did, 250, and we're not going to go below that. But remember, uh, if, if the prosecutor at the time and the judge agree that it's so egregious, we can go up to the $625. We are not limited to $375 on this. And you also, lastly, and I hate to be taking up all this time, remember when we started out, we did not have a fireworks ordinance for the city. So Officer, uh, excuse me, Chief Trowka's officers had to do this through state law, and the county attorney would do it. And last year, all we could do is disturbing the public quiet, kind of a, uh, an innocuous type of thing, where we could get our $75 fine, which we made it very difficult. So, uh, remember those things, please, that, uh, it's a simple misdemeanor, proof beyond a reasonable doubt, the difficulty factor is there. It's not that the officers aren't trying, it's just they're, they can't catch them in the act. And we can, and I can go over, uh, 375.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Again, you know, and I, I, uh, don't want to get at any argument with our city attorney, that's for sure, but, um, first of all, the language that is been proposed here also includes nuisance calls, which we added fireworks to the nuisance, uh, uh, code that allows something different. You don't have to catch them in the act, you just get, uh, information, you may have two, three neighbors calling, saying that this is going on over this property, and that nuisance call is subject to the property owner, not subject necessarily to the people letting off the fireworks, is my understanding of what we passed about a year and a half ago with adding that to the nuisance calls. So it's not just catching them in the act, but it's also adding the nuisance call and that the police can get people for that, which then requires an abatement, uh, kind of, uh, understanding with the property owner. And I can't imagine a property owner, if it's a rental property, being very happy with having that situation put in their lap. The next thing is that, that F does say by a fine of not less than $375. So the three, it starts with $375 and can go up, uh, from there. Um, and then the, the other thing is that my understanding is police reserve officers, um, could be part of this and could be utilized, and there would be nothing stopping from asking for some equipment for these police officers in the language that is in the state of Iowa code. We wouldn't have to put it back in here, it's already available, Mr. Mayor.
All right, um, Chief, I, I don't know, the, the nuisance, even if you get a nuisance call, you may get calls, but don't you still have to catch the person? Um, first you go over, you say somebody's committing a crime and you don't catch them in the act, I mean...
Mr. Morrissey makes a good point, Mayor. Uh, no, we don't, for, to utilize that component, we don't necessarily need to catch them in the act. If we, uh, let's say the officer, uh, gets called to the fireworks complaint, sees the property it's coming from, or identifies the property it's coming from, but he can't identify the perpetrator, it would fall under the chronic nuisance ordinance.
Okay.
Three calls, yes, sir.
And you can also have chronic callers, too, right?
Yes, that's why we have to have validation that, uh, that a negative event's occurring.
Oh, yeah. Somebody doesn't like you in their next door, uh, you can get a bunch of calls, too, so, um, the only thing I would say, um, I'm very careful to, to tell the chief what he needs to do with the staffing levels, um, whether or not to use reserves. I think that should be under his discretion, um, to enforce it the way he wants to, but I don't even, we have what now? For what?
Conversation got everywhere.
I mean, did we, uh, did you strike the grant thing, tell them they got to write grants every year?
I can read, I can read what we have on the table. We've got a motion to strike, the following language, "To the greatest extent possible, funding for such enforcement activities shall be obtained by application made by the Fire Chief or his designee to the grant program administered by the State Fire Marshal under Iowa Code Section 100.19." That's the last sentence of section G.
So what's the, um, so everything as is, the strike that?
Yeah. It's just the last sentence of section G is what's proposed to be struck in this amendment.
All right. So everybody kind of clear?
Amendment only.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
So the...
It passed.
The amendment passed?
Correct.
Correct. All right, now, we add that into the overall motion filed and considered and passed for the first time. So that is on the table now.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Thank you. Should have took the one day.
Make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
It didn't pass. It did, it did.
It did. We have three nays.
Yes, sir, make motion, suspend the rules.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor? I, I know that there had been some conversation about, um, suspending the rules here, but if we suspend the rules here when we haven't, haven't suspended them regarding the zoning change, I think that creates a problem because we haven't passed the zoning change language. We, we didn't suspend that vote.
The only complication it would create is just that, the, it just references the zoning ordinance and the sales component. Otherwise, all the other language shouldn't have an impact on the zoning ordinance, because that's regulating setbacks and etc.
Let's do the motion, suspend, just vote no. If you don't want it. If it's a conflict. Madam Clerk?
They're laughing stock.
Mr. Morrissey?
Uh, it's a motion to suspend.
On the suspension of the rules?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Foyce?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
All right, 11, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
Like to make a motion, receive, file, and consider, and pass for the second time in ordinance, amending the City Waterloo Code of Ordinances by adding new subsections C, D, and E to Title 8, Chapter 4, Section 7, Establishment of Stormwater User Fees.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second discussion.
David Driver, 3145 West Forest Street. Um, I have dug a little bit into this and find out since, uh, 2010, when the stormwater fee was put into effect and, and some franchise fees, we have gained $25 million. Um, it was also published, I think, last week that, that, uh, we had a $1.7 million per year, uh, income from the, uh, stormwater fee, and I think $400,000 actually went toward the project. Yet somewhere in the budget, I would assume that, well, let me back up, $1.3 million then was used for, um, equipment, employees, uh, um, engineering, et cetera. Uh, it seems to be that a little bit more of, I'll back up again. Seems to me that the equipment that we would have to have was already in the budget, uh, the, the, the fees for the employees, et cetera, would be in the budget, so I can understand... So, I can understand engineering. I would hope engineering wasn't $1.3 million, and only $400,000 went towards the project, again, referring to $25 million since 2010. Is there a way to have someone give me the facts and figures as to where that money went? A breakdown of over the last, since 2010, and let's say just over the last year, of where $1.7 million was spent, and only $400,000 of that went towards solving the projects, or solving the problems that we have, EPA, et cetera, mandating this stuff down to us? That sounds like a lot of overhead, a lot of top-heavy.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Knutson?
I'd like to have a printout on that, please, sir.
I'm going to take notes.
Jamie Knutson, city engineer. For the last fiscal year, there was $1.7 million that the stormwater fee generated. Out of that, we had expenses for various things, such as personnel, equipment, and various parts of our program, that totaled $1.3 million. That $400,000 that were left has gone into the, into the fund, and it's been sitting there the last four or five years, generating, and we've got a reserve now. That's where it's gone. As far as previous years and what's happened since the fee was actually put into place in 2010, up until this year, I can't answer that, I was not in charge of the fee at that point. We have used it for, pardon? Okay. We have used it for construction on different things over the years, I know that, but I don't think they've been large, basin-wide projects like I am asking for at this point in time.
All right. Let Ms. Shaw correct me if I'm wrong, but, so, the stormwater fee was adopted and was explained as being the stormwater quality improvements rather than quantity improvements. And these were new requirements of the city stormwater discharge permit, NPDES permit. Staff were added to monitor construction, that they were following appropriate guidelines, the street sweeping activities to fund this source, because it was required to be done. If we hadn't done it, then we either had to reduce staffing or use some other sources of fund. The, in addition to all of the activities, which I just mentioned, contract number 832 for the FY13 street reconstruction, Kimball Avenue reconstruction, contract 843, which was a storm sewer capacity, was increased at Park Lane in Kimball. Number three, Permian Bowl Paver Alley Downtown, this project was completed, paying instead of EPA penalty. Number four, FY16 storm sewer contract, number 906, Ash Street Drainage Project, 936, Hammond Bridge Replacement Contract, 922, FY18 street reconstruction contract, 944, and the Katusky Storm Sewer Replacement, are several of the different projects that have been utilized since then, that we've used that money for. Did I miss anything? All right. Any other questions, so we can? Yes, ma'am.
Norah Jean Zucker, 2853 Cedar Terrace Drive. I oppose the higher rate. I'm on social security. I don't think I should be paying at all, because there's no storm sewer, or that in front of my house. I talked to the engineer tonight, and he says, "Because some water runs in the ditch that I have to pay it, that goes into my gully." And I'm just really, you know, there's a lot of people out here in Waterloo that are on fixed incomes, and raising this is going to be a real hardship. I mean, it's going to come out of my grocery fund. That's the only place I've got for a raise to come out of. Plus, I really don't think I should be paying at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Since last week, and I thank Jamie Knutson, as well as city attorney Zellifer, for sending information out on this, and the entire ordinance was included in a website that looked up, and I know it's page after page after page, but in looking through that, and I want to look through it further, Ms. Zucker and other people who don't have that right in front of them, and I want to check on this, but it appears that language in that ordinance says that the city council basically is the sole discretionary authority in determining what projects go where and when. It's my understanding from the language in the ordinance, unless the state legislature comes up and changes that, too, with their local control. So, you know, and I believe also, with the language that I was reading, is there may be possibility to do variable fees, and I know that would be difficult, but I think that needs further exploring, Mr. Mayor, of, and I know that it, I was told last week that that's another issue for another time, but we need to make another time.
All right. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Mayor? Did you, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought, I just wanted to say, last week, you know, I was the one that brought up the $15 million figure, and I still, I got quite a few calls about $15 million, where did the money go, that I got no answer to. The list that you just went through, I guess I would question then, are we saying that none of that work would have gotten done had we not had the stormwater fee? Because, again, I'm pretty sure we had street sweepers before we had a stormwater fee. And my concern is that stormwater fee, sewer fee, water fee, every fee we're dealing with lately, we are raising, and my concern is that we are not looking at this from a global, from a holistic, from whatever term you want to call it, perspective, rather than just saying, "We just got to raise more money to fix this." A lot of these items came into effect after the 2008 flood. We've spent all this money, the money I'm talking about, and now the $15 million since 2010, and here we are, last year and two years ago, having these flooding events. So, obviously, what we're doing may not be fixing the problem, because it seems like the problem has gotten worse in some areas of town rather than better. So, to me, it would just be logical that we say, "Maybe we better take a better look at this." I voted in favor of it last week, because I thought with Council Morrissey and I, that we would be on the affirming side, so we might have an opportunity to bring it back up again for a change this week. I can see that's not where we're going philosophically, so I'll be opposing it this week. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Foyce?
No.
Thank you. Number 12, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, receive, file, consider, and pass for the third time and final time, and adopt an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by repealing Title III, Chapter IV, Article A, pawnbrokers, and replacing it with a new Title III, Chapter IV, Article A, pawnbrokers.
Second. That motion has been made by, with the second. Council, anyone questions on this item? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. The mayor with second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We adjourn.[1753.62]